One nation, under God, indivisible, in the name of this God.
That's by his prayer. Most gracious and everlasting Father, as once more again we come to say thank you for your grace and mercy. We ask you to bless everybody individually and collectively. We ask you to bless this council to make the best decisions for this county moving forward. We give you praise for all that you're doing to keep us under your care. All this, we ask in your son Jesus Christ's name, we pray, amen.
I want to let everybody know before we get started that our attorney won't be here today. I talked to him. He's running high fever and he's in bed. I told him he didn't need to be over here, so that's the reason he's not here today. We have a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask that we amend the agenda and I want to go in new business as letter S to say a few words before we go to all business.
How to put you on the agenda, yes, that you called Lisa Miller, the county council, and said you'd like to be put on the agenda and you have to be put on the agenda. You have to list what you want to talk about. You can't talk about one subject. And she said, pretty well said you want to talk about things in general. That's why I didn't put you on the agenda.
Okay, well, that's still pretty much almost the same thing, but you can say concerns, county concerns.
Are you making a motion to amend the agenda?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion to amend the agenda. Is there a circuit?
Yes, sir, I accept him as chairman.
Okay. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda now?
I'm going to push it with pretty good.
Is there a circuit?
Say.
All in favor of approving the agenda, raise your right hand. All again. Approval of minutes, September twenty second, twenty twenty-one. We have a motion to approve the minutes.
I'm going to push.
Is there a circuit?
I'll say.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. It will number five, Tax Accommodation Board Recommendation. Okay, you want to put in this?
Mr. Chairman, council members, I'm here on behalf of the Delaware County Accommodation Tax Board. Our chairperson, Mike Riffey, was unable to be here today, so I'm here on his behalf. And I think you have a packet of our recommendations. This is our second round of recommendations. And all of our reviews, first round came to you, it's your last meeting, I believe. We had a considerable amount of money left over after we addressed the request for the first recommendation that was done. And that money left over was due to not having paid out last year's thing due to the COVID situation. But the board decided at that time that they were, we would give other requests and opportunities. We may for some of these funds, and that's why we're here today. We have this recommendation, and I think you have it in front of you, and I'll be glad to attempt to address any questions that you may have. But we recommend that you approve these, and that will give us a remaining balance. There'll still be some left over of about twenty-five thousand dollars that will carry over until next year. And we will use it to address any requests for those funds next year. But our request is what we are, recommendations requested before you there.
You all done a very good job and put a lot of work into it, and the council really appreciates it.
We've got a good, we've got a good chairman this year. He's got us organized, and we're getting more requests out to people, and we're going to police, not police it, but see that these funds are used in a manner that's related to attracting tourism for our account.
That's what we appreciate. Do we have a motion to approve the recommendations that tax board recommended? I think everybody got a copy of it. Oh, you're doing very good talking.
I make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a circuit?
I say.
Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, Court.
Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Well, number six, now finance support.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll quickly go through that myself. We collected about a little over two point seven billion in revenue so far, which is pretty much in line through September.
You're turning your mic around, I thought.
You got my mic, huh? You hear me now?
That's the microphone.
You hear me now? Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, yeah, we've got about a little over, right at two point seven million revenue so far through September. Our expenditure is about four point seven million, so that leaves us right at about a million and a half, two million for revenue expenditures at this point in the year. So at this time of the year, that's, that's pretty close to what it is for revenue expenditures for the year. Most, most partners are around forty-five, fifty percent. They're getting close to fifty percent. Of course, the holidays coming up with, with December and November. But we're hoping to hold everybody close to fifty percent between now and December.
Anybody got any questions they want to ask about finance? We're going to number seven, new business and narrow corporation waste agreement.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we, uh, Mr. Hayward Proctor and myself have been working with this company here that wants to locate a facility here in Dillon County to recycle plastics. And good thing about it is now not only do they want to recycle what I call the ones and twos, which are bottles like this, they're also willing to do the threes and sevens, which is pretty good, something we've not had in a good while. Normally, we've been doing single stream recycling. This agreement here with this company here, and I did, as you can see, Alan Berry and I redlined most of the stuff through here. It's a company that wants to locate Dillon. They will take our plastic along with City of Dillon or whoever else wants to bring plastics to them. They will actually bail it and, and do the, you know, do the consolidation here. And then actually, I think they're going to actually put it in another facility in Florence. To actually recycle the plastics, I think they can take that, that info of those plastics and make them into some type of fuel. So what this, only thing this agreement here is, is that we'll try to get in, you know, ten tons. You know, we, hopefully we can get them up to more than that if we can get citizens to recycle. Hopefully I can get Dillon here, if I can get y'all to help us do an article. What I would like to see us do, talk with Earl and him at Landfield, is that if y'all remember way back, we used to have recycle a plastics bin that was separated by itself, right there. And the thing about that is, if you can get enough people who can recycle, and I think a lot of people already recycle, and they take their plastic jugs, they take their plastic bottles, they take their plastics, and if they can put them in those containers, which will be separated out, this company here will basically take it for, take it to, take it from us and City of Dillon or whoever else wants to participate at no cost. And they will turn around and then make some type of fuel out of it, you know, that part, but it's no, it's no cost to us. We got the boxes, we have the landfill that we've used before on that. So if we could get citizens to help us participate, you know, who knows? We may be able to get it where we could, you know, my goal would see us leave, you know, have less trash going than we can. I think that we could, if we could separate the plastics out, especially the, the ones and two to bottles and stuff are great. I like, I think that's a good idea. I think those are easy bits, but also people have a hard time getting rid of the, the other bigger bottles concerning, you know, like the, that should be the clothes, clothes bottles and stuff like that and other, other big plastic stuff. And then PVC pipe and stuff like that can go in that container too. So if we could somehow get the citizens to help us participate in that, it'd be less, less trips, make the length of it. So it's, uh, it's, it's, uh.
I hope, I hope you're worth it for the conversation.
I'm excited that we could possibly get it, get a place.
What are they going to do with the plastic?
Yeah, right now, we don't have a place to put them, so we're not.
What are they going to do with every second?
Yeah, they're going, they're going to actually make fuel out of it. They actually, because, you know, if you think about it, a plastic bottle is basically petroleum. So I mean, you know, so if you could get it back to a natural state, and you could, you know, dissolve it, you could probably make some type of liquid or some type of fluid out of it on that too. So I know they're working with Florence County to get a, a location there too, in Florence County, and probably around the state.
That's good. Thank you. Anybody got any questions they want to answer by?
Yes, sir.
Just wondering what we're sending was for Dillon County, other than feeding them plastic to make money with it?
Yeah, I think they, they have looked here at Dillon County, and they liked the facility out there in, out in the Riveteria area. And I think they liked the.
What's our gain on the tax base?
Yeah, I mean, they'll basically lease the building, and I think they got an option to lease to possibly buy the building. So they'll lease the building for a period of time and then with the option to hopefully buy it in the future. You know what I mean? I'm hoping that this, this thing is going to really take off. I mean, the, the concept is great. If, if the concept works, and I really think it's got a good potential to do to expand operations here, being close to ninety-five. They want to be close to ninety-five and being somewhere close to the, to the PD area and stuff. But I know they're looking at, but you know, basically, I think they're going to go to other parts of the state too, besides the PD.
Any more questions? Go down to seven B, rural initiative grant, circuit on the toll mark.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, can we, do I need to pass, can I pass agreement on this, on this thing? I think it's just redlined. It doesn't, it doesn't commit us to anything, but. Can you give that, oh, I gave a copy of this, I'll let y'all see. Anyway, we can take it up to next week, if y'all want to take this time. I'll give y'all time to read over it, how about that?
This place mainly going to the road?
Yeah, we, we can take it up next time, that'd be fine.
You're talking about the plastic.
The plastic for.
So we're going, we need to make a motion to table it?
Uh, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, I make that motion and we'll table it to get some more information.
Okay, um, we have a motion, circuit, a circuit. Okay, all in favor? Okay, then we'll put a seven B rural initiative grant, circuit on the toll mark.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we, we applied for it, of course, you know, council, I think you approved it in the past. We did actually receive the document for the rural initiative grant. We got two point five million from Commerce to, to look at doing our road project out there at thirty-four and ninety-five, and also dealing with the road that goes back to Harbor Freight, and also putting in a, you know, fringe road. That actually looks like you could continue with the fringe road, basically over to the other side of Fairfield. But I'm happy to report that we did get the grant, so we got two point five million. We also got the other three, we got this grant, which is two point five million. We got another three hundred thousand dollar grant from Commerce, SC Commerce on the site initiative program. So it looks like we're moving ahead, and then Tri-County Committee has been a player in this. They have done a lot of preliminary work along with Harbor Freight Tools. Harbor Freight Tools has done that too. Got Quick Trips and Equus involved, and the other plan owners out there involved with that too. So I'm excited that this project is hopefully moving forward. We get, it looks like the, if we can get everything done, maybe it'll be bid out in springtime, and we can somehow maybe hopefully get this ready in sometime by late summer, early fall next year. So I think that's a, that's a, it's a win-win for us, one elect for us. I think this is, this will help us, with this grant here, help, help bring us together with the Tri-County Committee, because they've been big players in this too, on this part here too.
Any new information on trying to get that bridge reinforced so old with all that traffic out there? We talked about it in the past, trying to get something to do that.
I totally agree with you, yes. I think that DOT is working with us to see what the possibilities are. I know they're going to have to do some improvements to that bridge, you know, especially once we, when you do the four-lane out there. I think we're going to have to, they're going to have to put some reinforcements in. You know, as, as you know, too, we've asked them to see if we can somehow get it four-laned. I think that it only makes sense to have it eventually four-laned across that, across that intersection, because I, I feel like we're going to get some additional money to do the other side too. So if we get the other side done, as you, as you and I talked, it's going to look kind of, not look right to have one bridge. You come off one bridge and two four-lanes. So I think that, I think that's the issue on that too.
Keep us posted on it.
Yeah, I will. And like I said, I'll tie this back into what Tri-County Committee's done and try to combine the two grants and down between them and Harbor Freight and all of us, and put it all in as one, one agreement. That way, that way all of us can be, you know, tied together, you know what I mean?
This requires a motion to accept this grant, we have a motion to accept the grant from Commerce.
I make that motion to accept the grant from Commerce.
Okay, is there a circuit?
I say.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Seven C, Gordon Park Community Center bid, is the rev in.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we got, we got one bid here. It came from Mr. Benjamin L. Smith. He's PE out of Charleston. He only got one bid, ran it through Skebo and those avenues there. I guess, since he's the only one, I guess we can, we can have him come and sit down with the Recreation Committee. Is that okay with y'all, have him sit down with Recreation Committee? And let Recreation Committee work through the details with him and then let him present a full contract back to the council, based on Recreation of the Committee. If that's okay with y'all.
What was, what was, actually, he bid on, he got, I mean, he bid on something, but now he's going to sit down and decide what you want. I mean, I don't understand that.
Well, he, all he did was give us a proposal. He, he had really given us a contract. He basically gave us a proposal.
He gave us what we asked for. We need to go ahead and vote, let him do his job. He's the only one applied. It's been out to the third graders.
Yeah, I mean, he, he basically, well, I mean, the committee may come in and make, and the council may come back and change once, once he comes in with the price. I mean, he, I think we need to probably meet with him, make sure that price is okay.
Well, I think you're kicking the can down the road.
Oh, I mean, I, hey, council wants to vote on it, that's fine. But I mean, I, I thought we would meet with him first and sit down with him and try to negotiate and put it in a contract.
That was what we said we could get.
This is all, this is all he provided to us, was this.
He provided exactly what we asked for.
Well, it's not a contract, but.
You didn't ask for a contract. You asked him to give you a bid.
Yeah, but once, yeah, once you get a bid, normally you get a contract.
Now, he just came last week in workshop and wanted to present us and wanted us to go with something for eighty-eight thousand dollars that wouldn't be bid out. We didn't do none of this, we didn't have none of this red tape to go through because of somebody he wanted to use. Now today, we bid this out for thirty days on Skebo, we ran it in the papers, and you want to come back with some old junk again. The man bid, nobody else bid, let the council vote, but go ahead and move the project forward and stop kicking the can down the road.
Just, just to clarify and make sure, this is not, this is not a document. This is just a proposal.
The bid, the bid, I haven't seen the specifications of what.
It's just a bid to get him to do the drawings or do any of that.
Correct.
Yeah, it ain't, that's all I guess. Yeah, he, there ain't been no specification for no draw.
We just trying to get the man to stamp it. What are we waiting on for that?
All this is, is to hire him. It's about to hire him.
Right, this is about to hire him to, to basically come back and say, he may come back and say, hey, I can't do it for twenty-two. I need, or I may do it less than twenty-two, or I may do it more than twenty-two, and then you make, who knows? We haven't had time to sit down and talk to him, I don't look.
Hey, it's just a black and white, and we vote on that, that's the price the man held it. What are you talking about?
Well, hopefully that price, I guess, you know.
We don't, we don't have one motion, we have, I mean, one bid. We have a motion to accept that bid.
I make that motion, Mr. Chairman, we accept that bid.
Okay, is there a circuit?
I say.
Any more discussion?
Yes. So we're going to set a bid on what?
On somebody, somebody's.
I mean, all I've heard was twenty-two thousand dollars. I said, nobody's worth it, clarify, what's for twenty-two thousand dollars?
All right, so a couple of weeks ago, we, well, a month ago, I believe it was, we met. We were talking about this Gordon Park project forever and today. We met, we had a community meeting, I mean, a, a.
Workshop.
Committee meeting at a workshop, talking about this project. We had to put it out for bids to get an architect to stamp the drawing. And so now we got the bids out on Skebo, and the only architect that.
I ain't even seen a drawing. Well, you had.
No, I haven't. All he did, all he did was give us a punch, just all he gave us.
You got to go through preliminary with him. The architect has to.
It's not preliminary, you got to get the whole process, we can do that, but that's.
I'm not going to pay this man, pay the man twenty-two thousand dollars just to, and you, I mean, what you paying him for?
The first of all, it's a grant.
Architectate, that is correct.
He's going to come in and do drawings. We'll, we'll sit down with him and go over all that stuff. I guess our Recreation Committee go down, sit down and go over him with, on what you want to design and all that stuff.
Right. We can't do, he can't do nothing until we do this.
Twenty-two thousand to come in and do the drawings.
Yeah. Wait a minute now. Pay twenty-two thousand dollars, the man is going to sit down table and nothing to tell him what to do. And then him do architectural drawings, yes, sir. I mean, I can understand it, he presents us with a drawing. Well, I don't mean, I don't. He don't know, you got to sit down and tell him what you want, what you want.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
But you don't allow a man to check to, to, we can get some what you want.
Is this the recommendation of the Recreation Committee?
We haven't really went over this here for.
Somewhere, somewhere in the last few years, committee recommendations have sort of dropped by the wayside.
Well, there was nothing to get a committee recommendation on. We only had one man bid, if we bid the project out, and only one man turned in a bid. I mean, there's nothing to get a, a recommendation on. We don't have five people to say, hey, I like this one versus this one. It's only one man.
Any more discussion, honor? We're going to motion that ten seconds. All in favor of, of accepting this one bid, raise your right hand. Opposed? Okay, we have number C, Sheriff's Department. A few, a few weeks back, I, I called a full council workshop, four people. They were the ten, the rest of them were tied up doing other things, and we brought up sheriff salary. We compared his salary to Maroon County and other counties outside. And we found out he was making about a cheap deputy salary. He was way below in the, in the sheriff's surround. And I know his qualifications because I've worked with him myself, and I felt like he should at least give what Marion County is giving. And we came up with, the committee of four people came up with a recommendation and pay him what, eight, you want to?
Eight, I'd like to make a motion that we increase the sheriff's salary and give him, raise to eighty-five thousand.
That's the same thing the sheriff in Marion is making. A little bit more than the sheriff in Maroon, but our sheriff has got more experience than the sheriff in Marion County because I was invested gave with Sheriff's Department when Brian Wallace went to work. He's a very fine person, but he don't have the experience our sheriff's got. We got a motion, is there a circuit?
I'll say that, Mr. Chairman.
Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand.
Yes, sir, I got a discussion. I know I didn't make the workshop, and I apologize. I think we got six elected officials.
Yeah.
And I don't understand, I, I'm going to vote to get the sheriff the money because they need the money.
Well, let me tell you, we, we, all of us agreed that all the ladies, the officials probably need to raise and wanted to look at their salary. And we, we did get, uh.
We're going to prepare one, we're going to.
We got a list right here, and it's got, it's got our treasurer at forty-four thousand, our auditor, uh, twenty-eight, which is part of the lowest person in the state. And I asked our administrator to find out what the state's part, the state paid, and bring it back to the committee, and we'd be glad to look at it and probably give him a raise, and he never got the information for it.
That's.
We're going to have another meeting any time.
That's, that's part of what my, my discussion was going to be about tonight.
I want our people to be paid on the top. We got the front page, the others, we got the truck to throw, we got the treasurer. At our side, I don't want them on the bottom. I want them to be at the top because they're doing a good job. And that's what we're going to talk for, you know, workshop this Sunday at which we're going to get them, you know, up and up.
Can I, can I make a statement? Before we call the workshop, we need to get all the paperwork on what is going to, doing the counties and making, so we're going, we're going. Make them one, let's pay them off.
Yeah, we got it.
We got to be fair. We got a motion on the floor, the sheriff. Yes, yes, sir, yes, sir, I agree with that.
We got, I'm the sheriff.
We don't want to leave five behind.
We got the sheriff, from the Sheriff's Association, plus we got to the Municipal Association, and we got, uh, these other ladies, the officials, service down, and Donnie Glitter's part of the lowest paid corner in the state of South Carolina.
That's what I'm talking about.
We want to look at all of them.
Well, part of, part of the problem, part of what I was going to talk about tonight, and you guys getting vote for it to go down, is the biggest problem we got is the leadership. Every time we ask the administrator to do something, we'll talk about it, and, and, and we never get anything accomplished because he never come back to the table. I had several meetings with him, including yesterday, about this very same thing, about the dividing the county and all of these things. And you know what I'm saying? Then why don't they just leave the county?
We got, we got a motion, a circuit, on the sheriff's, so, sorry. All in favor, um, raise your right hand. Okay, we go down to old business now. Science Department, air packs and tires.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we got a proposal on the tires. Eighty-nine tires at twenty-seven thousand, three eighty-nine, twenty-four. And the air packs are thirty-six air packs, this right, listen, three eighty-nine, nine seventy-seven, twenty. Three eighty-nine, nine seventy-seven, twenty. My recommendation would, like I said, would be to take the, the tires out of the general fund budget on that because we need eighty-nine tires to meet the OSHA standards and the SC DOT standards. And then the thirty-six air packs, hopefully based on the committee, we had committee meeting, they asked for thirty-six, is that right? Thirty-six air packs. Thirty-six, we got twenty-four last year, is that right?
And what was that total again for those thirty-six?
Thirty-six, we got twenty-four last year. So that, I think the thirty-six will basically, my understanding with the committee members here.
Yeah, what was the price again?
Three eighty-nine, nine seventy-seven, twenty. Three hundred eighty-nine thousand, nine seventy-seven, twenty. If you could, you could do it a couple of different ways, you could, you know, I recommended it. I think you could probably take half of them out of some of the ARP money, and the other ones out of the air pack, out of the Geo Bond we just passed, or we could take all of it out of the Geo Bond, either way.
I recommend we take it all out of the Geo Bond.
It'll be down here, when you come down. Uh, if you want to make a motion on the tires, we'll just take, take the tires.
We have a motion to, um, buy the air packs and tires.
I make that motion about air packs.
Is there a circuit? Any more discussion, but all in favor, raise your right hand. Well, H B, South Carolina Commerce, CBVG, South Carolina Coordination Council, Arkan Performance Supply, Notice of Award, Driggers Construction Company.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we get, Lizzy Prentiss, PD Council Governor, and I work with Jason Brown, who's, who's the engineer out of Florence, who's been working on this project, probably over a year and a half. They also, you know, that project is dealt with Hoover, it started out with Hoover, now it's turning to Acrillion. And that's already been changed over by Commerce. The, the project consists of putting in a sewer facility there, at the facility, if you go out there on Colwell Drive, it's already in their facility. The other part was to put in a road that would run parallel to their building, back to their fence line. We, that project was bid out based on CBG regulations. We got two bids, one's, one was from Driggers Construction Companies for three seventy-eight, three seventy-five, fifty. The other one was from Evans Payment Services and Company for four sixty-three, six thirty, three thirty-eight. I had Jason Brown in SC Commerce review the proposal, and they came back and said to Driggers Construction that y'all could award them the contract for three seventy-eight, three seventy-five, fifty, which would be totally a hundred percent paid for by a grant that I wrote. So I do need a motion on that.
We have a motion to award to Driggers Construction Company.
I make a motion.
I say.
Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, well, H C, New Landfield Transfer, Transfer Station Proposal.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I got another proposal from Davis Brown, who also doing engineering for this other project, same company, to do a new transfer station was one, their proposal here, what I showed you was one twelve, hundred twelve thousand. The other proposal was eighty-eight thousand to Smith Gardner. So I did ask another firm, I just wouldn't able to get another proposal. So I did get at least two proposals for that.
We came up, we want to get some more bids, and we were just able to get one more, and it was a tire than the.
I got two, at least we, at least we go to eighty-eight within a line.
Where did you go to get the bid from? Did you put it out like we normally bid, did you go through the normal bidding process?
I called, basically, I called, basically called the people.
What's the normal process though?
Yeah, I mean, basically, we already had one proposal, I couldn't get it, I couldn't bid it out within.
You go through the normal process.
We can, we can start all over, yeah, if you want to, that's what I'm.
No, we got to get that thing.
We can start all over.
We got to.
Gordon's been doing our work, and they do it cheap because they know what. Gordon's been doing our work, and they do it cheap, because they know what
See, that's what I'm saying, see? So we can pick and choose when we do things a certain way.
When that landfill breaks down, and these people ain't got it where to carry, where to carry their trash, and they'll do it your way.
Well, it shouldn't have been that bad.
I'm just saying, well, it might should have been, but we, when there's a problem, you better go ahead and fix it. I promise you, these people trash sitting in their yard, they gonna be mad. We've been, hey, we've been talking about this for three or four months, and he won't put it off for some reason. Time to go ahead and do this.
They keep trying to look out for friends. Go ahead.
I don't believe it. Never worked with you.
Okay, this new landfill, I feel like we need to get started, like we promised the man from D-Heg, that we would start on it right away, and he was fixing to shut us down about six months ago.
Yeah, and Smith Gardner, Smith Gardner's contract we hired to, uh, to do the patch into the current transfer station, so it's the same firm.
Townville would have to hold their trash somewhere, townville would, and D-Heg County would be out, out of trash pickup.
Yeah.
We have a motion to go with the proposal, the transfer station.
Make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is it a second?
I say.
With Smith Gardner.
Smith Gardner, any more discussion? Only favor is your right hand. Opposed? Okay, on A to D, GEO bond, air packs, for the ninety-four thousand, nine eighty-eight, sixty.
I just, I want you to split it up. You know what I mean, so I said, you know, I was thinking that you could take two out, you could take all of it out of GEO bond, or you could take half of that GEO bond, you know what I mean, so I mean, or a combination, you know what I mean, so I just put it down there. I know we talked a little bit about it, but, I mean, you've been a little bit about coming up with a, to fund it, you know what I mean?
You want us to vote on this today?
You gonna take half out of general fund and half out of GEO bond?
Half, well, half will be as, as the, uh, uh, what I call ARP money.
I don't agree with that.
Is that what the committee decided?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, that's what we talked about.
We didn't decide as I, were we gonna take the money from, we decided that we actually needed the air
Yeah, we gotta have them.
Yeah.
You can take them out of each one.
And then they'd be good for ten years, that's what's
We need the air pack.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And the tires.
And the tires.
Yeah.
Why can't we take it all out of the GEO bond?
You can, it's whatever you wanna do. It's whatever you wanna do. When you got, you got this ARP money, I think you could cover that, or you could take that GEO bond.
Clay's been looking at the money on both ways, and he, he, he real good, he's trying to do this, to push best for the county, and I think this is the best way to do it.
Well, we just spent three hundred thousand dollars out of the recovery money in the last meeting on MS, so we can take that and get it out of the GEO bond. That GEO bond's restricted funds. We have employees calling all the time, talking about being underpaid and stuff like that. That ARP money is, that's, we can use that for employees. You're talking about keep, taking care of employees and citizens, we can take care of them by the ARP, and we can't do it out of the GEO bond. We can't spin up all of the unrestricted money on stuff that we can get from restricted funds, it don't make sense.
Any more discussion?
You can't give raises out of that ARP money.
Uh, I think I might wanna go check that again.
Okay, well, you can. Well, just say you could. When that money runs out, how you gonna continue to pay that raise? Just ask. I mean, if you don't have the money, you'll raise those people's taxes.
That's why we
Or, we may need to use that ARP money for the elected fiscal raises.
Yeah, we need to take care of the employees that's keeping the county running.
Well, I mean, if you give raises out of that, I, hey, I'm all for giving raises.
You can't give it out of the GEO
But if you give it out of that money there, it, when it runs out, you gotta figure out where you gonna give, continue to pay for those raises.
We got another two some, two points or million coming next year. By that time, you should be at a place where the county is, is able to, to gain some money. At, at some point, you gotta realize, we can't use these positions as political, political gratification. Everything's going up, and we still operating on a tax base from years ago. A pack of chicken, five years ago was probably six dollars, today it's twenty dollars. Gas, six years ago was probably about two dollars, today it's almost four dollars.
That's political gratification. If I could give every employee a raise, I would. It'd make me look good.
No, what I'm saying, though, is, we always say, well, we can't put on a meal here, 'cause this is the next year. Who cares? We gotta handle the pressure of the county.
They gotta do election, but, hey, these people aren't paying twenty dollars for that pack of chicken, I hate the rate tax.
Do we have a motion to spend a hundred and ninety-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty cents out of the GEO money to go against air packs?
I make that motion, three, okay? Spend, uh, the GEO bond, the air packs.
Okay, is it a second?
That's seven.
Any more discussion? Only favor is your right hand.
Have somebody half of it.
Yeah, no, he's, he's not.
Opposed?
Quick question. So is the whole thing coming out of GEO bond?
Well, yeah. Well, half of it is.
So we already get half the money and half the
Right.
So we just voted to give out of the ARP, or just
We had, we had got that on the agenda. It's coming up on the agenda.
Give one, the nine eighth, a resolution approving consent to the transfer and assignment by MDTH Harbor Freight LLC, two, in assumption by thirteen, two thirty, Satico LLC, a California Limited Livelihood Company. Paul H. Bogation as trustee of the Paul H. Bogation, twenty twenty-one, irrevocable trust dated March the twenty-second, twenty twelve, and Christopher G. Bogation as a trustee of the Christopher C. Bogation, twenty twelve, Uncle Tuck, Dave Martin's twenty-second, twenty twelve, of certain existing fees in lieu of tax and special source credit agreements to which the county is a party and other matters relating thereto.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the, uh, the building that was built by Marburg Development Team, which is out on Fairfield Road, uh, they have decided that they want to exercise the option to sell the building to this particular company here, um, and that's within their right, provided council gives them the right to, to assign it, to sell it, to sign it to somebody else. All the agreements that go with it, with the fee and lieu, and all that will just be exactly the same as it was, it would just transfer over to them. I did have bond counsel, which is Brandon North, who's our bond counsel, uh, he did review the documentation, he's, he's the one that sent that
This new building on Fairfield is Marburg, this is this field, and this, this something's gonna rent Harbor Freight also.
Correct, they gonna keep the same agreement with, uh, with, with Harbor Freight Tools.
We have a motion. The lead, Marburg, this is
My motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll say.
Any more discussion? Only favor is your right hand. Opposed? Okay, nine B, US City, for one of our state and local fiscal, fiscal recovery funds. And you got down here, air packs, a hundred and ninety-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight, six, you know, sixty cents, that's what, half, half of the price of air packs, the other half came for GEO money. And, uh, premium pay for county employees.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll do the premium pay at the next council meeting, 'cause I know we got some issues dealing with, uh, emergency service employees, and the fifteen hundred dollars will have time before the, in the November.
And, uh, we have a motion, um,
So that's more kind of place for us?
The, uh, premium pay will be done, you know, normally we do that in November, to the end of November, usually, usually the, the last week or so, and we'll take it up on the seventeenth meeting or before, you know.
The whole town, full town county employees get fifteen hundred.
Yeah, that's what we're shooting for.
And I know the fire department is
And we're gonna look at fire departments.
Number fires, it wants to
But they'll be, they'll get it at the same time, we'll either take it up, if y'all have a special call meeting, or if we take it up on the November seventeenth meeting.
And give them the money in
Yeah.
The same time they normally get it.
Yeah, yeah.
So it won't postpone anything for us. Everybody get what they need.
That's what they say.
Okay, this time, will it be based on how many, how long they've been here?
Yeah, it'll be based on the number of hours, like we did last time. It'll be continuation of the number of hours, like we did, one dollar per hour, up to a certain amount. Fifteen, fifteen hundred additional hours. Actually, it'll be all the way up to the end of this month here, which will be October of twenty twenty-one.
We just, as far as the motion, we have a motion.
To prove the air packs, if you, if you do that.
Prove the air packs.
I made a motion to prove the air pack.
Okay, is there a second?
I say.
Okay, any more discussion? Only favor is your right hand. Up here, we have number ten. Recreation Affairs. Eight, Dillon County Predators.
Yeah, we, I guess, at least you got this, you got one from the Predators, and then you